The carpenters are excused. I'm going to call the board.
All right.
Yes.
We're just making sure the video's working?
I already pushed it so it'll be recorded if there's a red dot on there.
I will check. I just handed it off to you.
So I'd like to introduce our consultants from Baker Tilly. Oh, I want you to introduce yourselves and then they can create a variety of texts.
And then just reminding everybody to keep up so the folks on the phone can hear. This is live here.
No, it doesn't do any. It doesn't do any.
Yeah, I would speak loud.
Well, thank you. On behalf of Baker Tilly, we're very pleased to assist you in this strategic goal-setting and priority-setting process. I'm going to introduce myself and let Michael introduce herself. Mark Davis, been with Baker Tilly formerly Springstead for five years. And before that, I also ran my consulting company for about 10 years. I'm a former city manager down in the Kansas City, Missouri area for about six years, at least some of Missouri. Before that, I was in another community as an assistant city manager for about six years and also worked for the city of Dallas and Texas. So I'm pleased, a lot of my, when I was working on my own, a lot of the work I did was strategic goal-setting and strategic planning initiatives with cities and counties and leadership teams and those kinds of things. So that's, I was asked if I'd help out with this service and by Michaela and Terry, and I said, "Sure, I'd love to help." So that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Michaela Doitt with Baker Tilly, again formerly Springstead. I'm coming up on my 20-year anniversary next week. So my 20 years at Springstead, now Baker Tilly, have all been working on housing and economic development, working in a variety of states in the upper Midwest. My primary role is working with communities on analyzing incentives, taxing and financing other programs, and really trying to work with our clients on achieving their goals related to development, housing, and other public purpose objectives while minimizing the level of public investment and risk for each of the projects that you're involved with. So my role here is to facilitate some of the conversation on specifically with the policy objectives on why incentives are used, why they're not used, and how it relates to housing and economic development.
So Rebecca Forward. So we've got, we modified the time just a bit with, as far as minutes allotted for each section. Generally, it's, we're anticipating two and a half to three hours, but if conversation does not merit going that long, we won't. If you're absolutely enjoying and enthralled by the conversation, then, you know, we're going to encroach upon that hour. So let's, what I like to do is be a little flexible with these agendas because you never know what you're going to get into discussion or issue-wise. And sometimes it's important when there's issues that need to be discussed to kind of delve deep into the issue, and it may take a little longer in one area than it does in another. So hopefully everyone will be okay with having a little flexibility in the discussion tonight. You could move along Rebecca. What I'd ask, just for, we've introduced ourselves, if you could each introduce yourself and your name and how long you've been on the village board or CDA or been involved as a staff person with the village. And then also, as part of your introduction, what's your favorite thing, what's the favorite thing you like about Shorewood? Okay? Where do you want to start?
Who can share the meeting while I'm on the phone? Can it be trustee mentor or trustee day?
You know, the consultant is actually leading the dialogue on the agenda, so I don't, other than calling the meeting to order, I'm comfortable with them moving through the other items on the agenda.
Well, sure, then I'm Allison, President Rosak. I was trustee for two years and then became president, and I've been interned for about a year.
Great. What's your favorite thing, President?
Favorite thing about what?
The thing about Shorewood. Favorite thing about Shorewood?
Oh, right. My favorite thing about Shorewood is the public engagement. They're very, they're a very high-level public engagement, and I think that's really important in operating.
Great. Thank you. Next.
My name's David Almenta. I was first elected in 2015. I'm still a CDA. I think I was a CDA in 2015 and 16, and then just recently again in 2019. I really enjoy about Shorewood, we have about six to eight weeks in the summer when we are like a beach town. We turn, kind of turn into a beach town. And I always like this couple of weeks where you can get in the water and swim and head out to the beach.
Great. Next.
Peter Hammond, the CDA, chair of the CDA tenure. That's a really good question. I think it's five or six years, I think. And favorite thing, I would echo President Rosak's comment, I like the passion of Shorewood residents. I think they, they want to live in and build a great community, and everybody has really strong and powerful ideas about that. I think that makes for great conversation and driving us in the right direction.
Great.
And Rebecca Ewald, I'm the village manager for Shorewood. I've been here for just over two years, and my favorite thing is very challenging. So I'm going to give you my favorite thing today, which I think is very cool. We got solar on the fire station today. It's a lookout window, one of a large objective of this project that our community was very passionate about, entered negotiations with NSFD, was solar on the fire station. So for those of you not present, it looks outstanding.
Looks like solar panel.
So, so, right, solar panel. We're getting there. So I just wanted to point that out to everyone because it was some, you know, solar's been a huge part of my, my life here in the last year. A welcomed addition.
Hi, Markie Mariuson. I'm the finance director for the village. I've been with the village for over six years now, and I look forward to giving a sense of how the group wants to proceed into its next steps of economic and housing development and other community objectives. I think one of my favorite things off the village of Shorewood is the residents' sense of community. Everybody has a lot of input and opinions, but everybody's generally thinking about Shorewood first, and that, and that's very enjoyable when I have conversations with various residents and elected officials and volunteer committee members.
Great.
I'm Anne McKay, and I joined the board in 2013, and I'm going to be going off the board at the end of this, in April, or at the end of April. And my favorite thing, before that, I was on the Parks Commission, and my favorite thing is the walkability and that my kids aren't afraid to cross the street.
He stole mine.
My name is John Kraus. I think I'm still in the first year. I think I'm still in the first year. I don't think I passed the year mark on the CDA. Been a resident of Shorewood for going on five years, and my favorite thing about Shorewood, and one of the major reasons we moved here, was walkability, bikeability, and just the general vibrancy of being able to live in a small town, but urban environment, close to everything. It's just, that's what we love about it.
And then on the phone, you have trustee Mahler.
Yeah. I've been on the village board for 15 years and the village board of the old district, seven years. My favorite thing about the village is it's a damn small town. You meet people on the street, people are neighborly, and you know, it's really, it's nice and friendly, so that's my favorite thing.
Great. Can you hear me okay, trustee Mahler?
Uh...
It's really light.
Light. Could you move closer?
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Out the audience?
My name is Kathy Stoker-Brenn. I'm a trustee candidate, and I've lived in the village for 20 years, and I would echo the sentiment about walkability. I love the architecture, the residential architecture, the diversity. It's not a cookie-cutter suburb. It's a beautiful place to take a walk and bike.
Great. Thank you.
I'm Arthur Sinc, also a trustee candidate, also president of the bid for the last one year. My favorite thing about Shorewood, I love the business improvement district. I love Shorewood Little League, and I love the Shorewood Farmers Market on top of all the other great things that everybody's mentioned here, the walkability and the engagement, I think are all just fantastic for the community.
Great. All right. Is that it?
Mark is actually also on the phone. He's our planning and development director.
All right. Mark?
Sure. Yeah, so I'm George Mcitrag. I've been the planning and development director since the summer of 2017. I've been in Milwaukee for a lot longer than that. I've been attracted to Shorewood for a team and scale development. And since getting to Shorewood, I think what has surpassed that in terms of why Shorewood is a great place isn't that the passion that people show for it, you know, on all sides of issues. It's great to, for the state meaning where people, you know, are passionate, there's our opinions on things, so I think I've been growing more and more appreciative of that as I've thrown into my role here.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Okay. Next slide. Purpose of work session, I took a shot, and if you all believe it's a different purpose, then let's talk about it. But to work as a team in pursuit of economic development, redevelopment, and enhancement of commercial properties and housing by developing a set of goals and priorities to guide and improve our community in the future. So hopefully that's close.
Sounds good.
Ground rules for a productive work session. Number one, everybody participates. Number two, avoid side conversations while someone else is talking. Next, be respectful of others' opinions. Bring all issues to the table. Be professional. No personal attacks. Agree to disagree. Think of the big picture. Be honest and be committed to a process of dialogue. All right. For you all on the phone, this is the question, "Why set strategic goals?" And the answer is, you've got to be very careful if you don't know where you're going because you might not get there. Anybody know that, who that is a quote of? Yogi Berra. But it rings true if you think about it. All right. Survey questions and responses. Purpose of the survey, I think everybody, this may have been on the survey as well, but I just want to remind everybody, intended as one measuring tool to identify priorities for economic development and housing for the next two years and beyond. No right and wrong answers. I've summarized on the PowerPoint for brevity. The longer detailed document is pretty comprehensive, although it is abbreviated a little bit because it was just, some people had very, very long answers and multiple long answers. So, and responses were kept anonymous. We didn't attribute any to any one individual, and the important part about that is, it's not about who's raising the issue, it's about the merit of the issue. And so hopefully, in that spirit, we can talk about any issues that people either strongly believe in, you know, have, have no concern about, or do not like at all, and have a discussion on.
Mark, just kind of, I have an under-comment about summarization of responses. Is this document the one we've been held out, is this the full?
That's, that's the detail.
This is all the responses?
Of, of everyone. Some of them may be abbreviated, but I tried to keep the exact same intent. That was, that was intended with whoever was responding. I didn't, I didn't look, I don't know who responded, but I tried to condense some of the, some of the run-on sentences down a little bit and so forth. And then had to really get them down to even get them, try to get them on the PowerPoint. So they're just examples on the PowerPoint, and we'll have more thorough discussion. Or if I've missed something key in the, in the longer document, then we can talk about those issues as well. Next one. So just a quick overview of some of the issues that came up in the, in the feedback. The strengths, and there are a lot more than this, but this is just a feel and probably where there was more consensus, where there were multiple responses of the same thing. You know, in some cases, eight, nine people that responded said the exact same thing, or organizations that responded. So close and easy, the strengths of Shorewood. Close and easy access to regional amenities, great schools, high-density development, downtown, along the downtown commercial arteries. Community support for bike and pedestrian infrastructure and safety. Diversity in terms of types of households. Strong community events and a spirit in the community. Property values are strong, vibrant, strong character with great architecture, trails, and a sense of place in the community. It's hard to, I mean, a lot of wonderful things going on in town, and everybody talked about, a little bit about a big part of them within their introductions. All right. Some of the issues or challenges to deal with. Concern about, and there were a lot, numerous responses that said throughout the response that we've got to stop using private development, I'm sorry, stop subsidizing private development, and the central business district is fine without subsidies. Limited land and space for future development is a constraint. Limited economic development tools. Lack of support for TIF in the, from the community. Empty storefronts, commercial rent is too high. Taxes are too high. Pedestrian and bike safety, an afterthought, although there were a lot of answers that thought that was a strength, so I think there's some differences of opinion there. Lack of diversity and outdated regulations when it comes to zoning and planning policies and development policies, that kind of thing. All right. Most important thing we should be doing, and plan for future commercial development. Disproportionate share of the tax burden is on the residential because we have so much residential and not a lot of commercial.
When they say commercial, is that all commercial, like a dumpster?
Yeah, all, all commercial is, that's how I read it to me. They didn't define exactly, if I remember right. I don't think there was exact definition, but commercial meaning everything except Somebody answered nothing that we should, most important thing that we should be doing. Someone believed the identify market and proactively design redevelopment opportunities. So kind of a, let's take an initiative and design our own future development. There's a comment, "Consider lending support to developers." And then another, "Update zoning code and design regulations to preserve character and improve aesthetics." One thing we need to do better is question three, "Consider commercial real estate expert for guidance," or a firm. Expand the, oh, second item was, "Market the community better to potential developers and potential residents. Expand our toolkit to retain and expand commercial development. Incorporate more art and smaller urban parks throughout the community. Reevaluate current economic development and business programs. Recruit businesses owned by women and persons of color. Improve public treatment of developers and businesses and benchmark with other similar cities. Drive competition for the open storefronts and vacant lots and, and, you know, develop some initiatives to get, to develop interest in these storefronts," I think was the much more detailed description in the, in the packet.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't know, do you, as a consultant, have, do you know what the vacancy rate is or maybe you need to be directed about? Just while we're hearing that so much, I just wonder if, that what is the vacancy rate?
I don't know what the vacancy rate is. For some reason, I vaguely remember, somebody may have mentioned that in one of their responses, what the vacancy rate is, but I don't remember. I'll, I'll have to look through and see if I can find that.
But you'll be looking at that at some point, or?
I mean, I, I have no idea. Your, your commercial real estate folks could tell you right off the top of their head, what's your vacancy rate is.
We don't have those.
I can look it up early next week, President Rosak.
We just have for that, 10 to 11, and I believe it's been safe for 20 years, but keep going, I'm sorry.
Single digits. I think it's, I think it's lower now than it has ever been since I've been here. A lot of those big spaces.
I think there was a comment, "Tend to lower it to 5%," was what I read, is what I'm remembering now.
It's got to be, I believe it's under 8%. Anyway, where else would I leave?
I would like my department used to issue vacancy reports, and it was between 7 and 11% continually. I don't fully understand the math behind that calculation, it's an access database, and so I stopped doing it just because I wasn't sure it was based on, of course, what interests was based on tenant's base, and so I was never able to corroborate where that number was coming from, but when we were lying it, it was between 7 and 11% pretty continually. Since that time, it has filled, you know, some of those bases, so I would say on the lower end of where it was, you know, two years ago.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, I don't think because we don't have an economic development specialist on board, like on staff, to be at the department, I know you know, because we don't have someone dedicated to that, the perception is that we have a lot of vacancies and we're going to, when we do our planning exercise tonight, to be, to be known of, do we? Because getting down to what's the regular percentage, is, you know, what's the average around the nation? Because if we don't have things with a problem, I don't know that we want to focus on that, but if we do, we would, because I know I hear it a lot, so I just wanted data. But go ahead.
Number, question four, what should we stop doing? Some responses were incentives and subsidy for new development, new commercial businesses, minimize hurdles for the development community, assess CDA and determine if it's, is still Focus resources and time on high-impact initiatives. Lift restrictions on food trucks. Remember, this is what we, we need to stop doing. And better educate the community about how incentives work.
I'm pretty sure that subheading is incorrect.
The subheading.
And again, can I just come to get, in a word, but I don't agree with all of these statements, but without the data showing to me that we have a vacancy rate that's high, or that we have, you know, that we have a need based on our vacancy rate to attract, you know, I don't know, I don't know how to make a good plan without knowing those
What, what were you talking about?
Well, it looks like...
So I've heard all of this, and it means that you only have 50% of opinions, but if we're going to strategically standard it, like it comes with the goals, I said this specifically when we did the RFP and like, oh, I, we have the numbers, you know, I, it's the vacancy rate is high, I agree that they need you to trust it, but I don't know how to make a plan unless I know that is correct.
Okay. Now, I'm sorry, I wasn't referring to you, President. I was asking the finance director what he had said. And I, I know it doesn't say what you think it should say, but I think it was in the response that way, so they may have mischaracterized their response or put the incorrect response in, but I tried to get it close. And some of the, some of, it's almost a double negative with some of these responses, but I think you can see, for example, assess CDA, determine if still viable, what they're answering the question is, should we stop do, should we stop utilizing the CDA, is what their response is, is what the, the point of that response is. Next. Question five, most important outcome in the next three years focused on commercial. And I wasn't sure what this is in reference to, condominiums privately owned. And that, that's residential condominiums, I think they're referring to right now, commercial?
Yeah, we don't have, the whole nation didn't have any public rebuild at the time. I mean, they're coming back, but because of the housing levels, a lot of the residents and people want, you know, homeownership options.
But are, I guess my question is, are they publicly owned now?
No, they're apartments.
No, they're private apartments.
Oh, they're apartments. Okay. I understand. And then...
That's what I think they're, and that's what they're saying.
Toolkit build-out, which to keep working on developing strategies and tools for economic development. Concentrate on, and focus on two to three specific retail areas for improvement. Allow the market to dictate what is the best part of CBD, of the central business district. A commitment to sustainable development and green infrastructure. Partner with the county on projects. My impression, based on the long detailed response in the, the longer version, was that to leverage more resources to bear in initiating projects, and they used a couple of examples in their response. Market and fill empty storefronts, including a focus on recruiting diverse businesses or encouraging diverse businesses to, to come to Shorewood. Next slide. Most important outcome for the next four to 10 years, revise the zoning codes. So this is more of a long-term strategy. Address strategic sites in the master plan. Focus on developing commercial to relieve the tax burden on residential. Assist entrepreneurs to secure grants and rehab older buildings. Address vacancy rate, and Madam President, I, I understand, agree with what you're saying.
We're doing. But... Without the data, I don't even know what to say. Go ahead.
Yeah, but there, somebody has a perception, there's a concern there.
Everybody does. If there's an empty storefront in Shorewood, we have a high vacancy rate. I just don't, I need data, that's before we even started this, because I can't, I can't, I mean, I don't know if that's true. I don't believe it.
Okay.
My 20-year experience, but I need data.
Okay. Prioritize redevelopment to improve community character. Next slide. The strengths and challenges for feedback on housing activities and priorities. Kind of a broad belief that we have a lot of quality older homes, cross-section of prices and types of housing. Diverse housing stock, unique and... Diverse housing stock, unique and charming. Great neighborhoods, walkable, with strong property values. And then challenges, older home, homes require upkeep and maintenance, affordability and, and is a challenge, as is high rent rates. And taxes high, some homes are functionally obsolete, not built for aging in place and lack of senior-friendly options in a lot of the houses.
Can I just give an example for the rent?
Sure.
We've had our housing setback and the perception may be that they're high, but if you have a little more rent in Shorewood, it's just like the people that are living there are not the low-income people. They're actually high-income people with, who are in low, low rent, tough area. So, so the data shows that the perception is not correct, but that we understand people with low income have a hard time coming here. So how do you fix that? So for strategic planning, you would, you would admit that without the data.
Okay.
So it was an example.
Most important things to do in housing, revise codes to allow for more uses. Assist homeowners aging in place with tax credits. Support residents making improvements to their homes. Clearly identify community goals and incentive metrics. Develop a tiered redevelopment, sub-tiered redevelopment opportunities that prioritize or incentivize adaptive reuse. Consider options for seniors and create and reward diverse housing options for rehab, rehab of houses or, or newly proposed redevelopment. Any other issues? Next. What can be improved in housing? Digitize inspections department and, and there's a lot of detail, I think, on this one. Too much, way too much to put on, on the PowerPoint. Provide easier access to assessment information. Define affordability and update zoning codes to better reflect goals. Integrate more affordable housing, et cetera. And incentivize green, sustainable, energy-efficient buildings. And if you look at the question nine responses, there's, there's a lot of information in there. Okay, question 10. What should Shorewood stop doing as it relates to housing? Building inspections, they don't mean stop-going inspections. That's a prompt for me. They, they wanna take a less aggressive approach and have more flexibility in building inspections of, of proposed or ongoing renovations of homes. Let, yes. Luxury housing developments that do not take into account an element of affordable housing. So the, the comment here is, if we're gonna have big new residential developments, then there needs to be a component associated that has some aspect of more affordable or attainable housing that's kind of integrated into a proposed development or redevelopment. Stop incentive programs that reduce housing stock. And stop subsidizing market rate and luxury housing.
And that's, okay.
Okay, and 11. What is the, what is the most important housing outcome that you would like to see the village achieve? More singer, single-owner dwellings available? Does, does that relate to the condominiums, comment?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Take action on recommendations from the housing study. Develop a plan and priorities. Conduct a best practices comparison of successful housing strategies from other communities. Conduct some public meetings to create consensus around the need for affordable housing and how it relates to diversity. Conduct proactive code enforcement. There's quite a few others, but those, those give you a feel for, for the proposals, for one to three years. Question 12, what is the most important housing outcome that you would like to see the village achieve next four, four to 10 years? Better balance between single-owner dwellings and apartments. And find opportunities to fill the affordable housing gap, which would be a big policy change, obviously, or initiative. Innovative program or development of housing for middle and lower-income people. And ordinance to preserve historic homes from demolition. And some more of the same issues we've been talking about.
There wasn't a slide for question 11 or 12?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't.
No.
Okay.
A lot of this is repeating the same stuff from earlier. I, I wanted to read more verbatim issues related to the CDA, because it, it just wasn't all gonna fit on the slides. 13, how can the CDA communicate more effectively or most effectively with the board and variety of stakeholder groups? And some of the answers were online or in public meetings. Someone on the CDA said, we can do a better job of interacting with other community committees and groups to maintain a cohesive approach toward economic development and housing. Another suggestion, quarterly, establish quarterly meetings with the village board. Utilize, to a better extent, staff liaisons. Establish liaison with committee through mutual meeting attendance or email correspondence. Consider changing the regular meeting of the CDA a few times a year so that more people can attend the meetings. My assumption is they're during the day. Is that, is that what's happening?
Right now, Friday mornings.
Yeah, so.
Early morning.
People that are working may not be able to make it or. So that's, that's essentially some of the suggestions for how the CDA can better communicate. Last question, how would you prefer to, to provide comments and feedback to the CDA moving forward? One response, email. CDA could have a presence on Facebook like the Conservation Committee does. Many people in the community don't even know what the CDA is or what it does. Again, a quarterly meeting with the village board. Some of the same answers we, we've already heard. Regular attendance at CDC meetings if housing issues are on the agenda. And through staff liaisons, like the Planning Director was another comment. So that, that's a kind of quick overview and summary of the issues. And I'm gonna let Michaela talk a little bit about some of the economic development policy and options. And then we're gonna go through and start trying to talk about and have you all identify what you think are the, the most important priorities that, that have been brought up through this survey and other ideas you may have as well. Okay.
The question is, we had a break, dipped into this. So the question is, if you want a break before, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about why communities use incentives or some of the policy discussions for consideration, which will then lead into the, the actual discussion on, on these items. So the question is, if you'd rather have.
Can I ask a question really quick about process? I had asked when we, when we were interviewing, we hired, when we hired the first.
Your turn.
Before we go into making policy or deciding anything, are we gonna get data? Are we gonna do a study? Or are we just gonna make, are we just gonna base it on what people have said?
Well, what my, what I typically do with communities is there's got to be some identification of, of consensus around a set of priorities before we start doing any research or assessment of more details. And because, I mean, right now, there could be 20 or 30 initiative, policy options or initiatives. And I think it's, it's very important that the group kind of narrow down what are the most important, because you can't do them all at once.
I understand, but wait, how do they, sorry, how do we, we have a housing study. And they specifically said we do not need, and is right now the market is for luxury and market rate purpose. That will guide, even though we need to educate the community too, because the perception may not be reality and without education from the government, I don't know that they're, you know, they're just, you know, just going by gut. And I'm near, I'm nearly there that he's saying that we're making policy off the perception. But go ahead.
Well, one of, one, one of the things that might be a priority, I, it depends on the whole group, would be what you just said. We putting together a marketing and education plan to the community of, of the findings from the housing study as well as ideas for priorities that you have over the next, you know, several years and beyond. And so maybe if there's consensus on priorities, you've got to get out there and educate everyone so that they have a feel of what you all as the community leaders think the priorities are.
Well, if no one knows the vacancy rate, I can't make, I can't educate the community.
Okay.
If I could add, the purpose of our conversation tonight is, is to give sort of a broad overview of, it's, it's not to make necessarily any decisions on policies itself. What the, the goal is to provide a framework for which to make future decisions. And so the information I am providing is, is to give kind of a broader perspective of what all communities are doing as it relates to incentives and why they want to participate or why they don't. One thing we do know is we work in a diverse climate and there are communities that we choose not to participate. There's, there's communities that want to be very proactive. So it's kind of a balance of being proactive.
Data.
Okay. So communities make a decision if they want to be proactive or reactive related to housing and economic development. And then they frame their policies and guidelines to, to adapt to how they want to interact with development and housing. So again, the.
I disagree, I just, I mean, they make that based on what the issues are, based on data. That needs to be modified.
I have a question. Can someone please tell me what we're hoping to end this meeting up with? What, what is the goal tonight? What are we trying to accomplish before we leave this building? Because I'm not sure I really understand what we're doing here.
The, the goal, as I understood it, was to have discussion about what possible future priorities the community, leadership of the community should consider in, in, in moving forward with economic development and, and housing initiatives. And one way.
We're trying to come to some consensus? I mean, is.
Consensus or.
Straight to my question. Is this the CDA asking the board what we should be working on or vice versa? Or what?
Jointly.
But this isn't determine the CDA's marching orders, correct?
Yeah.
Or the board's marching order, I'm a little confused as to what we're doing.
I think, well, this, this is, the goal I would say is to, to be on the same, to have the board and the CDA on the same page with respect to the village's activities around economic development and housing. So that we're sort of proceeding.
And we're trying to figure that out in the next two hours.
Well, no, and, and I would say it's such a big question.
It's a huge question.
Yeah, and it's such a broad question, there's so many opinions on it. To me, tonight is maybe about narrowing the focus a little. To maybe come up with some broad themes that I think we actually just heard from what, what went through. You know, I feel like, again, it's been a lot of work to put this together. We, we just got it sort of recently, all of us, just, I think we're still kind of all absorbing what was in here. But as you hear our talk, as, as you look through the list, I think it's pretty clear there are some, and I, no. Just I'm, I think we already know what some of the themes are. But that's what I would ideally like to come out with, broad things that we, we commit to investigating more and maybe identifying some action items out of that and/or policy implications out of those. You know, really, to me, coming out with a handful of projects, if you will, of things we want to work on. You know, I'll make one up, you know, tip, obviously, you care incentives. As people think we're done with it, we shouldn't do any more of it. People think it's the most important tool we have in our toolkit, okay? So how do we, how do we all come to agreement around that question? Is it an effective tool? What is it? How do we modify it to make it effective and useful for everybody? So I, I agree with you, this is a hard, this is hard to wrap our heads around. But that's, that's to me what I think we're trying to get, is narrow it down.
Well, what we had originally contemplated was to, to come, try to develop a narrowed group of themes, of issues to consider, and then work based on the direction coming out of this meeting tonight on those narrowed themes and begin to kind of more further develop some action steps for research and doing more to narrow it down. And then meeting again on April 2nd, if I remember correct.
Yep.
And having another follow-up meeting in a little less than a month. But it gives everyone time to think about these issues, to, you know, talk to others and get some input. And, and just begin to refine it down and, and what's plausible and, and, you know, what's, what's gonna be a short-term possible goal and priority. And then what's gonna be, you know, we don't have enough information, we don't have enough understanding of that. And what's gonna be more of a longer-term strategy?
I think we have to come to a consensus or try to on what, what our narrative about economic development is. Because if you asked the CDA like eight or 10 years ago, I think, I think the answer would have been, well, we're supporting luxury housing in the Central Business District because wealthier people will spend money and support the, that's a way of supporting the businesses.
Or that we're.
We're bringing more people to the, to the Shorewood with the financial ability. And that's because our business, the first narrative is our business district is voluntary. We have to keep our business district. So how are we gonna do that? We'll build luxury housing and that will support that. Another narrative used to be, we want to encourage young families to move here because our school enrollment was going down and we want to boost school.